Okay, the special board meeting for February, I mean, February, Friday, Friday, November 2019 is officially open. Good morning.
Good morning.
At this time, we will ask Mr. Buckles if he will do the pledge for us, and we're going to ask Ms. Pickens if you will give us a prayer.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
The pledge is alleged.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, thank you so much for today. Thank you for the people that have come to this meeting. And Lord, we just ask that you guide us and direct us, and give us the knowledge and the heart to do the right thing
Yes, God.
for the employees of this county. Lord, thank you so much for everything you've done for us, and continue to be with us, and bless our county. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Holly. Okay, at this time, we are set for public comments. And you don't have any. Okay. All right, let's go right into our action items. Number one, selection, Blue Cross, Blue Shield plans.
Madam Chair, I'd like to, we're going to go through every section of this plan, is that correct? First, before we make a recommendation.
How do you want us to do it, Charlie?
The insurance committee gave two recommendations, or two options for their recommendation, and it's the board's vote to decide which option that you would like to choose.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we recommend the choice that includes Plans C, D, and E.
I will second that motion.
Okay. It's been properly moved by Mrs. Jane Crawford that we accept Option Two, the secondary choice of the committee for Plans C, D, and E. And it was seconded by Mr. David Buckles. All in favor?
For discussion.
Oh, okay.
For discussion.
All right.
My next question would be, Mr. Douglas, could other aspects be asked, like how the superintendent feels? Mr. Superintendent, could you give us some guidance on what you've met with finance? And give us an idea of what you think.
Yeah, and again, there's some, you know, some financial considerations that, you know, are on some other options that you should be looking at today. Again, my recommendation would be the status quo of C, D, and E. We have a number of people that are still on Plan C. And I think at this time, you know, we would be, you know, basically creating a hardship on these people as far as changing this now. And I'm not saying in the future that can be done, but my recommendation would be to maintain C, D, and E.
Okay. Any other discussion from the board? Okay, all right. Again, Mrs. Crawford made the motion, Mr. Buckles seconded. We've had our discussion. All in favor of Option Two, the secondary choice of the committee for Plans C, D, and E? Let it be known by all.
Aye.
Opposers? Hearing none. Motion carries five zero. Item number two, the board insurance subsidy contribution.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to once again hear from the superintendent on how, after listening to some of the testimony earlier from our financial director, how he would like to kind of direct us here. Not direct us, but advise on what he feels.
Okay. Mr. Superintendent?
Yeah, and thank you for that. I think one thing, you know, we're going to have an increase no matter what in our insurance. And again, we've provided a salary increase for our employees, first time in 12 years, of up to 3%. And again, I think we are doing everything we can to make sure we don't take away that salary increase through insurance rates. By the same token, though, we have to be cognizant of the fact that the insurance fund is our ultimate goal as a district, at least as superintendent, is we ultimately want to be self-insured. And in order to be self-insured, we have to maintain the integrity of the insurance fund. And I think our finance director made that aware, the numbers are aware to you, that in order to do that, we have to maintain a point where we do not bankrupt that fund. Because again, this is a long-term solution. And but by the same token, we want to soften the blow from the board of any increases to our employees as best as we can. And currently, you have a $75 MOU, flat rate, that has been in effect, which will expire sunset at the end of December. My recommendation would be to help soften the blow and not to bankrupt the system. And again, my concern with the tiered system that was proposed is there's too many unknowns. Again, with any migration, we know what the maximum would be, and the maximum would definitely bankrupt us. But there's so many unknowns of how many people would migrate to D and C through that tiered system. I feel very uncomfortable, and I know Ms. Odom does too, with just saying, hey, let's do the tiered system at this point, and not knowing what the movement would be. So my recommendation would be to authorize our chief negotiator up to $150. In other words, double that $75 flat fee, and let our chief negotiator, Mr. Bowling and Mr. Modle, work out an MOU that would be up to $150 per month, flat fee for all three of those plans. That's my recommendation.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a, I'd like to make a recommendation, we accept, and we go with the doubling the insurance subsidy to $150.
I'll second it.
Okay. It's been motioned by Mr. David Buckles that we increase the $75 subsidy to $150 flat rate across the board. Is that?
Do we need more discussion?
Oh, any discussion? I keep not wanting to discuss it. I apologize.
You tired of discussing?
Any discussion?
Who seconded that?
I did. Crawford.
It's Crawford.
Yes, I'm waiting.
And if you, and again, if you have any questions for Ms. Odom, she's here. I know she's provided you some information, but just in case, if anybody needs further clarification, she's here.
Any further discussion from the board? Hearing none. It's been motioned again by Mr. David Buckles.
I'm sorry, is there any, I guess, any input from the insurance committee on this morning?
Probably could, I guess. That would be up to Mr. Douglas. Would be allowable if the board chair chooses to hear from the insurance committee.
All right. Mr. Modle?
Whichever one wants to come.
You are Mr. Smith, it doesn't matter.
A question?
Yes, sir.
And Miss, Rhonda may be able to help me out on this, but $150 across the board, how is that?
It's the exact same thing.
That's the worst-case scenario?
Yes, and that's what I provided in the worst-case scenario. But as we talked this morning, the idea was to not, if an employee wants to choose a certain plan, not to make them feel like they're treated differently. Maybe even be penalized if they don't get enough. And I did tell them.
Rhonda, can you come up to the mic? I just want to make sure we get it right.
The folks on Plans D and E are penalized every year when their rates go up at a rate commensurate with what the Plan C folks are getting. And this is what we're trying to correct here. The folks that are on Plans D and E, they're getting an increase that's not commensurate with what their claims are every year. And that's the reason for the recommendation of the tiered system, is to try to, you know, even that out a little bit. We can't, the insurance companies won't give us, you know, a tiered increase based on what the claims are per plan. They say, well, we got to kind of rate it across the board. And there are minor differences between them, but it's all roughly the same increase. Plan C is running at 107%?
107%.
Whatever, over 100%. D and E are running more healthy. But the plans, the folks on Plans D and E are getting increases that are not in line with what their claims are. If you give everybody across the board, this is, again, it's softening the blow for the folks on Plan C who are the ones that are driving the claims. And I just, I want you guys to understand what this means. You know, we've talked about the death spiral. We've talked about folks getting off the insurance. If you talk about, talking about the ultimate goal of going to self-insurance, $150, I mean, if we're concerned about the cost of the tiered plan, this is more expensive. This is the worst-case scenario for the tiered plan. This costs more than, you know.
It costs more.
Well, it costs as much, well, as much as the maximum.
But it's the board.
As much as the maximum.
It's the board contributing the exact same amount to every employee, instead of having anybody that's on Plan C call them and say, why did you treat me differently? Why are you only giving me $75 a month? And you're giving the other people, you know, 100 and 150.
Because we're looking at the long-term health of the group plan here.
All right, well, let me do this. I will withdraw my motion, and somebody else can make the very same motion shortly. And let's discuss it for a little while. So I withdraw my motion at this time. And somebody else can make another motion. But I was under the impression, I felt like we were doing what's best for everybody.
And that's honestly what we felt.
Well, and the, but the argument I heard from the superintendent just a moment ago is that we want to look to, we don't want to bankrupt that insurance reserve fund. And this costs as much as the worst-case scenario.
It costs exactly the same amount. She told us. Yeah, I said that.
Okay, but I don't understand, you know, I'm not, it's not adding up in my head. You know, the cost of the tiered plan is less, could be, probably would be less than the $150, because that's the maximum. That's the worst-case scenario.
That's if everybody moved to that.
Which is what the superintendent said would, could bankrupt the insurance reserve.
Now's the time for all of us to talk about it and to have Ms. Odom. I felt real good about it, you know, but I don't feel as good now that you and I have talked, or you've come up and talked. But I'm willing to hear any other items. But the rest of the board may feel strongly about where we are right now with this. So we got to see what happens.
Okay. So for me and anyone else that may want to hear, explain the tier. Start with.
So we'll start with kind of the.
What are we talking? Dollars and cents, as close as you can get it for us.
Right. So, let me start with just kind of a justification for the tiered plan. Justification for different amounts of subsidies for the different plans, which is not a new thing. We've done this before. The insurance committee and the board has given subsidies to certain plans years past. It's been a while.
I don't remember that.
Paul, that's correct. It has happened. It's in the past. We would try to drive folks to Plan B or to Plan C in the old days when we had ABC, to try to drive folks towards the less-rich plans because the claims were high on the more-rich plans. The folks on Plan C have claims ratios of 107, 108.
Are you calling Plan?
Plan C. What's the claims ratios on Plan C? 125%? 120, 120, oh, we're 107 overall, right? 107 overall. So 125% MLR on Plan C. And Plans D and E are riding at less than 100. They're 50, 60. 50, 60. I don't have those numbers off the top of my head. That means the folks on Plans D and E are not driving the claims for the insurance. It's the folks on Plan C that are getting the most benefit from the insurance. For the least, they're getting more bang for their buck than the folks on Plan D and E already. And with across-the-board $150 per person for everybody, you're further subsidizing the folks on Plan C that are already utilizing and driving the claims. In the past, when we gave different subsidies, it was to try to encourage folks, just like when the board gave the seed money for the HSA accounts, was to try to drive folks towards the high-deductible plan, to give them a little push, to give that a try. And in the past, we weren't able to allow people to move back up plans. There's a lot of precedent here for trying to encourage folks to move to a less-rich plan, so that they're more cost-conscious and they're more concerned about where they're spending health insurance dollars. Okay? I don't think that I'm speaking out of turn here to say that it's not fair to the folks on Plans D and E to keep subsidizing. They are subsidizing Plan C with their premiums. With their premiums increasing at the rates they are every year, that are not in line with their claims, they are subsidizing. The folks that are paying premiums on Plan D and E are already subsidizing Plan C every year.
Let me ask you another question. Mark, you mentioned the death spiral again. We were making some pretty good ground with Mr. Albritton in the avail process. I mean, if, I mean, if the board so chose to maybe go out and try to retain his service, and I see a head shake, you know, it doesn't, I'm just curious, would that, we need somebody that can gather this information for us in a more reasonable fashion. I hear Leon County just retained him and some other counties around the state. If we were to bring him back to be our employee as well, would that appease you guys? I mean, are you still?
I can't speak for the committee because we haven't discussed that recently. But individually, I can say that I think that it was something I was planning to bring up with the insurance committee, to say, I think that now more than ever, we need, we still need to retain his services, I believe. Because we're trying to right the ship. We're trying to get the claims under control. We'll never be able to go self-insured with 120, with 107% claim ratio overall. We wouldn't, that would bankrupt the district to go self-insured when we have claims that are out of control like this.
Rhonda, can I ask you to tell us what the increases would be for policyholders on C, D, and E with $150?
We looked at every possible subsidy amount.
Just so we all know how that impacts each of the plans.
And you got to remember, too, that, yes, Plan C does have more of the claims and everything, but those employees are paying a lot more. They're paying without the subsidy. They're paying 566.93 with the new rates a month for 10 months versus people on Plan E who are paying 216. So they're paying more out of their own pocket also to keep C. But if we went with 150 subsidy all the way down, the increased cost to the employee on Plan C would be $41. Plan D would see an increase to the employee of $22.92. And Plan E would have a $6.32 increase. Is that what you were?
Yes, we are.
D would have a decrease.
Yes, that's correct.
Yep.
Okay, so.
So let me say real quick that I do applaud the board for pursuing additional supplements for the employees overall. I think that's a great thing. But I just didn't think that this meshed with the argument that we're not trying to bankrupt the insurance reserve. You know, kind of talking about this, this is the worst-case scenario of the everybody moving to Plan E to get the $150 supplement. And I just didn't think that meshed with.
Well, how much less would the tiered, if we did the tiered?
That's the one that we don't know. Like I discussed the other day at a board meeting, and I discussed today, until we have opening enrollment and people move, we don't know. I gave you the.
Right.
possible cost, if everybody stayed where they were. And I gave you the maximum possible cost, which, as he says, is the exact cost of everybody getting a, well, it's the exact cost of everybody getting, what was the recommendation of the committee? Was it 150 for E? So it's the exact same thing. Because the worst-case scenario is everybody moves to the tier three, which is E. And that was my worst-case scenario, dollar amount-wise. And then, it was discussed, well, you know, everybody, what's the most we can do? What's the break-even point for the group insurance fund and everything? And what's more comfortable feeling? So we don't run the risk of a break-even point and not maintaining the 2.7 that's in there right now? Because I explained how any person moving, without our insurance, moving into any of our plans is a net effect of a negative, if you went with, whatever the subsidy amount, the easiest one would be $100. It's a net effect of a negative 5,500 because their 4,500 doesn't go in. And then they also get the subsidy amount. So what we discussed, the different dollar amounts that we looked at and everything, you know, we all felt the most comfortable with 150 across the board. So if you were doing something for everybody.
Just, I would like the board to keep in mind that while we are certainly considering short-term impact to employees, but we also have to be considering long-term impact to the plan and the viability of the plan overall. The goal of going self-insured, I'm with the superintendent. We've talked about that. That's where we need to be. This size of a group, we need to be self-insured.
And that's why we're trying to hold the money in the insurance.
But the claims ratios are not there. We've got to get that turned around. A part of what the insurance committee's recommendations are about, are trying to, and with plan design changes, and we didn't do any of that this year, but when we do plan design changes and other things like this, trying to look at the tiered subsidies, a lot of that is about long-term driving folks to make better decisions with their insurance, driving folks to be more cost-conscious about how they're using it. If they have a co-pay, there's no difference to the employee what they pay. But to the plan, you know, there's a huge difference, maybe. But they don't shop around because the co-pay's there, you know.
Do you feel like the people on C are not making good decisions about their health care?
They don't always need to, because the co-pays, the way that plan is structured, the PPO plan's a richer plan. The first dollar, you know, they've got a lower deductible, but because of the co-pays, the first dollar's not really theirs. You know, they pay a $30 co-pay for an office visit. This doctor's office might charge 200. This one might be 300. But the plan picks up the difference. To the employee, it doesn't make any difference. And so there's not that, the push, they don't really have to necessarily. Now, we would encourage folks to, and there's, in the resources that we have, people can do that, but.
With us being with a company, and they're saying what's the most allowable, wouldn't it be the same no matter which doctor you went to? In the state of Florida or in Palatka? If the insurance company says, you know, we're only going to pay $80 for, and so that doctor has said they will accept the insurance.
So we'll talk pharmaceuticals then. Talk pharmaceuticals. You know, they get a prescription for something. Their plan, the tiered plans or whatever the co-pays are for the meds, doesn't change the price for them. But to the plan, there's a huge difference on that. If they go with this brand, or they say, hey, you know what? That one's an expensive one in my plan. Can we look for something else that is equivalent, that does the same thing, but that is cheaper to our plan? You know, but they're, you know, and they've got a lot of, you know, all the carriers have resources to help folks make those choices, to cost comparisons, cost estimates. And one of the, in the rally program, one of the $25 gift cards you can earn was for getting a cost estimate for something. And, but there were differences in what the cost, you know, what the cost would be to the plan for different things in there. Pharmaceutical's a big part of that.
Yeah.
You know, drugs. But there are other services, things that are, you know, other activities, that other.
Because I just wanted to say, I'm on C, obviously. And I do everything that United Healthcare tells me to do to try to take care of myself. I pay more for my insurance, but I still, even after my insurance kicks in, I'm still paying so much money to keep myself well. So, you know, I don't, I don't know what the best thing to do is. I feel like people on C needed, because we pay so much more for our premium.
That $6,000 deductible is pretty rough on that Plan C.
It is, it is. And my wife meant that this year. We're, no, well, we're on Plan E. My wife, you know, my wife had some procedures done this year, and we've paid that out-of-pocket max. You know, we're there for this year for her, because.
Would it make you, would it make the insurance or the bargaining unit more, make this more palatable if we dropped Plan C to 100 and kept D and E at 150?
Let me interrupt and say that I've got kind of, I've got mixed feelings in this because.
Thomas, I'm not ready to make a decision. I'm just asking a question.
From a bargaining standpoint, I'm like, hey, every dollar we can get for the employees, you know. But, you know, kind of got my insurance committee hat on right now, you know, saying, you know, looking at the long-term viability of the plans. And trying to make sure that we are encouraging folks to, you know, we've got folks on Plan C that probably need to be on Plan DRE because they don't go to the doctor enough to utilize it.
Right.
They should be paying lower premiums and building up an HSA account for when they need to go to the doctor. You know, but.
That's scary, though, that they won't be putting money into an HSA.
First of all, I want to preface what I'm about to say with the fact that I agree with everything Mark is saying from a strategical, long-range goal. The only problem, or there's a few problems, a lot of people are on Plan C because they need to be on Plan C.
Why?
Right. So if you automatically take that plan away, those people will go on Plans DRE. And those unhealthy, I hate to use the word unhealthy when I'm talking about people, but I don't know how else to say it.
People with problems.
But everything, it comes with them. So that will affect that just a little bit. But the biggest thing is, even though it's a great idea to probably go to Plans D and E, pulling the rug out from people who haven't had a chance to weigh in on it, you give them a raise and then you take it right away because it's going up, what, $91? If we kept the $75 as is, I think it would go up $91, so.
$116.
$116.
So $116 a month for a group of people, and consequently, it's the largest group of people who have health insurance, over half are on Plan C. If you increase theirs by $116 without any notice whatsoever, it's going to feel like a pretty big blow. And, you know, and I get it. I understand exactly what the strategy is. I understand it. But it hurts so many people in the here and now. I think if we're going to do something this radical, we should put everybody on notice. 12 months from now, this is going to be a happening thing. And we're going to start.
We tried to do that last year, though. A year ago, we had that conversation, said.
Not everybody's paying attention.
We want you to go to high deductible. It all, yeah.
But I don't think there, we've already voted on C, D, and E. That vote has already happened. So now we're just talking.
Just determining now what the one, whether the amounts are across the board.
I just wanted to bring one thing out, and, you know, used to, we were worried about participation dropping and that being the death spiral. I don't think by doing what you're doing, I understand the concept, I understand that C's high, a lot of utilization, and it is high, but I don't think that that is going to help us in the participation whenever the plan, the plans stay the same or even E goes up a little bit, that you're not gonna get any more participation. In fact, in years to come, I think we're gonna have the same thing. What's the definition of insanity?
Doing the same thing over and over and expecting different results.
Okay, thank you.
Mark, you're gonna have to help us here now.
I'm gonna say one more thing. Thomas said, you know, that, you know, we don't want to hurt anybody. Well, the folks on Plan D and E, every year when their premiums go up at a rate greater than what their claims show, they're hurting, you know? So I just, we need, we've got to look at that, and I'm, you know, I'm game for whatever kind of conversation folks want to have about it, but, but I can tell you, the insurance committee, you guys, you guys have praised the insurance committee for their knowledge and for their, the hard work they've done. We've spent a lot of time talking about this stuff, and, and, you know, the long-term plan is, you know, self-insure is where we need to be. And working with Joe, working with the veil, we're trying to turn the ship around so that we can bring those claims down, the ratios down, so that we can be in a position to go self-insure, you know, and that's, can't do it at 107% claim ratios.
Nobody up here, none of us are insurance experts.
And, and we aren't either, but, but we try, we pretend to be.
But Rhonda is our...
More than we are.
She is our chief financial officer, and we have to do what we feel she's comfortable with us doing. I've withdrawn my motion, but somebody's free to make another motion, the same motion, if you want to make it or not, I just, I just wish there was a way to make everybody happy and be all things to all people. I just hadn't quite figured out how to do that yet.
Me either.
Ms. Garrett?
Yes, Mr. Motul, you mentioned that we had the conversation years past that we, we are going to notify the employees ahead of time that this is down the road. How did we do that?
Well, we had the conversation last year.
Word of mouth?
You know, well, we, I mean, it hasn't actually been announced. We had the conversation last year that, kind of in the insurance committee here, that we would, you know, look, this, this is something that's coming, and we definitely need to give people warning. The recommendation last year was to raise the deductible a bit on Plan C to kind of help people transition to a higher deductible type plan, kind of, and you guys voted knowing that, that's fine. But kind of prepping people for that, because one of the biggest problems with Plans D and E is that people fear the change. They fear not having a copay, they fear not having the money to go to the doctor. They don't understand that the difference in the premiums, you stick into an HSA, and so we've, we've met our out-of-pocket max for Lindsay this year, but we had the money in our HSA to cover. Now, not all the, initially before, but since the time we've, you know, because the difference in premiums, we put in that HSA. And so the money's been there. We had, you had the money in the account to pay for it. So we didn't have to worry about a copay because we had it in the HSA account to pay for that. We've briefly talked about...
I think more people are understanding it more.
But I think the fear, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the fear is that if you do move to one, there is a difference in premium, but how long is it gonna take that difference? It'd be the end of the year before you'd have enough.
Right.
In that HSA, so if you have something major happen early...
Yeah, what do you do if there's something catastrophic?
They don't have the money to cover, is what I've heard from different sources.
Yes, now I have heard that.
Well, like I said, we didn't have, there wasn't enough in ours to pay for all of it upfront, we paid what we could then, and we paid the rest after, after the fact, set up payment plans, and we paid off as we go.
Whatever we do, we probably, we probably need to send a letter to every employee telling them exactly what's happening.
And maybe quarterly, something to let them know.
And what's coming up next year.
This is... I'll leave it to you guys to discuss. I'm over here if you have any other questions.
All right, thank you. Any, any further discussion before we entertain another motion? Because if you recall, Mr. Buckles rescinded, rescinded his, his...
I didn't know if another board member would want to make a different motion to tier it or not, or to stick with where we were.
And let us most definitely hear what the committee has said, and, and Mr. Buckles brought out, making sure, absolutely sure, that the employees understand that 12 months from now, you will be looking at, you know, and it will be spelled out and possibly could be done quarterly.
Well, then we gotta decide how that's gonna be done before we...
We're gonna have to follow up on that because it's easy to sit up here every year and say, "We want everybody to know."
Right, that's what I said, we need to make that plan now.
And if you don't have a letter that says, "You sign this and return it," so you got proof of it.
If that's how we're gonna go.
Mrs. Collins, is that feasible? I know, because now everything is direct depositive as far as their money, so it's not like you get a check in an envelope back in the day when I was there, but a letter being mailed to all of the employees that would give them notice that this is coming.
There's Skyward two, you can do it all, there's plenty, that's a, that's a...
Okay, it's, it's an easy fix, but we want to make sure...
Somebody's gotta be in charge.
And I don't think that would need to come from Tammy or from my office, that needs to come from somebody representing the board that's reached the board or representatives.
Mr. Attorney, is there...
I don't think you need to vote on the letter today, maybe you have...
No, we're just, we're just kicking around so that we understand our obligation, what we're saying to the employees, and then maybe draft the letter. I mean, it doesn't have to be done right now, but right now, we do need to, to move forward with what is on the table, and right now, if I'm not...
We've got a lady, raise your hand, wants to speak.
Excuse me, may I just make a comment? I do not...
Would you please come to the podium, to the microphone, please? And state your name and...
I'm Erin Ellen Goodwin, I'm the VP of Sales and Account Management for United Healthcare, and I'm listening to all of this, and I just want to make sure that everyone is aware that we have filed a notice for an intent to protest the decision. And my concern is going forward with this and starting enrollment while we're pending this administrative protest is not in the best interest of the members, of the employees, to be making decisions when in fact it may be changed. So I would just like to bring that to the board's attention.
Okay.
Thank you.
And duly noted, thank you so much.
But we do know that our enrollment and open enrollment is, is the problem that's kicking us in the...
That we need to carry on doing what we're doing.
And I think her, if I interpreted it correctly, is, is focusing on the letter that will state down the road, right? Not necessarily...
No, it's the entire process.
Okay, the entire process, okay.
But some, we gotta do something so they can start contacting and enrolling people.
Make a motion.
Yes.
Okay, any more discussion?
I do have one question for Mark. If, if...
Can I make one more comment?
Yes. I believe that when there is a protest, there should be a stay as far as the decision of the board on what to do to go forward.
If I could just say, obviously, our firm is recused from the bid, so I'm not giving the board advice on a bid or bid protest. Is your legal counsel here to provide...
They are not here today.
The legal, okay. Just, just based on Florida statute, my understanding is that a, a notice to file a bid protest is not the same thing as a bid protest, and that the stay does not begin until an official protest has been filed. I don't know if United has...
That's, that's what we got from the legal counsel that's representing the board, that's exactly what they said, I have the message on my machine right now.
Okay. So Mr. Dietzen is who represents the board for the bid and for the bid protest, and that would be in his purview. So, absent your, is there a statute or a legal opinion that you have available today that you...
It's statute 120 is what he was referring to, that you had, we had to file the intent to protest within 72 hours of the award of the bid, and then we have 10 days from that to file the formal written protest.
And so you're saying though, this morning, that a formal written protest has not been submitted?
No, we have 10 days to do that.
But as of this moment, a...
Correct.
A formal written protest has not been submitted?
That's correct.
Okay.
The intent to protest has been submitted. The issue that, or concern I have, is that to go forward with all of this and start enrollment and then have to, if it, the protest is upheld, to have to go back to the employees and the members and tell them that they have to go through the enrollment again and that something's going to be different is not in their best interest. So my concern, my concern is about the, the employees and the members that we have been serving for the last four years.
We can't leave our employees uninsured.
Do we need to get...
They're, they're not uninsured.
You could have to get, you'd have to...
Does it probably get... Do you mind if we take a brief recess? Thomas, you got that number?
We'd have to take a recess, yeah, take a recess and call Leonard and...
Yeah, well, if you want to take a recess, we can get the other attorney on the phone.
Okay. I can, I can get our attorney on the phone, if you have a phone that we can...
Chief Chair.
Okay, all right, you, you can, but we're going to take a 10-minute recess from this time, so that will be 10 minutes to 10.
9:47.
Yeah, we will reconvene. We're going to go ahead and reconvene, the time is now 9:51.
Madam Chair, I spoke with Mr. Dietzen, the board's attorney for the bid and any potential bid protest. He was on his cell phone, I believe he was in the car. He did not feel comfortable communicating to the board on the telephone, not in person would be his preference. He asked me to relay to you that the board may proceed in the absence of a formal written bid protest, that he would be sending superintendent an email to your attention regarding that matter.
Okay.
And...
So we can continue.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Attorney, for that information from Mr. Dietzen. At this time, we have heard the discussion, and Board, what is your preference by way of a motion or, because we've had the discussion, so we are now officially set for a motion.
Madam Chair, just, just for reference, we're looking at number two? Number two?
Yes.
On the agenda?
Board, board insurance subsidy contribution.
Okay.
That's correct.
And I did have a question for Mark Motul. If, if we were to say, on Plan C, just give $100 subsidy, do you think that would drive people, I mean, is that effective or not effective?
The answer is, I don't know.
Thank you for being honest.
So I don't know. I, I think one of the conversations we had at the insurance committee meeting when we talked about these was that we didn't really feel like even this tiered plan of the 75, 100, 150 would drive a whole bunch of folks to, you know, everybody floods to Plan E. We didn't really think that was gonna happen because folks like the, they like the, more the security that Plan C provides, and so we didn't really feel like people were gonna, you know, jump ship for Plan E, flock to Plan E with the different tiered options. So, but I don't, I don't know, you know, these were kind of, we spitballed a bunch of numbers that day, and these were kind of where, where the insurance committee settled and, you know, but I don't, I don't know, I don't know where the magic numbers are, what, you know, what would be kind of the, the, what do we say, breaking point, kind of, you know, just where the thresholds are that would make people more comfortable or less comfortable with, with making changes.
But in answer to her question, how does Holly, Holly mentioned just going to 100 and then raising the other two plans, is that more palatable to you?
I think from the long-term viability of the insurance plan, yes. You know, and again, I've said earlier that, you know, from the bargaining standpoint, every dollar that employees can get, I'm for, and that's, so it's, you know, it's, you know, balancing this, you know, trying to, I'm not, I'm not trying to negotiate, negotiate away dollars away from our employees, you know, don't get me wrong here, but, but going self-insured down the road, you know, trying to keep as much money in that insurance service as possible, trying to help the employees in the short term, you know, I, I understand that you guys are in a, in a tough spot here where you have to weigh all of this, you know? But, and I hope the insurance committee has, has given you enough information to really think about it, and maybe even just start, whatever you decide today, think over the course of this next year.
Yes, sir.
A lot, and then, and I know the insurance committee will have conversations about it, I, you know, and then we've talked about educating employees, I know that was a part of kind of the, the literacy, insurance, insurance literacy that we were gonna be trying to really roll out to employees, making sure they understand how all the plans work and how to, you know, the differences, so that people might be more comfortable moving to the high deductible plans later, which are, you know, I guess, less costly to the plan, you know?
But the short answer to Ms. Pickens' question is, yes, it is more palatable.
I can't speak for the insurance committee, and then again, that's, you know, yeah, I think for the insurance committee...
Not for the employees, just for the...
Right, right, exactly.
Yeah, I got you, exactly, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Any other discussion? All right, now remember, we do not have a motion on, on the floor because Mr. Buckles rescinded, he withdrew his motion, and so if all discussions have, have, you know, come forward, and we do have the information from the attorney via Mr. Dietzen, and Ms. Pickens has asked her question of Mr. Motul, now we need to do something to move forward. And so I am set to entertain a motion.
And I think without any, any action, Mr. Attorney, you could comment on this, it would revert back to the 75, or just so they understand?
No.
That ends, that ends, it would go away. It would go away, so we'd have to, there would be no subsidy at all unless you take action.
Yes, sir.
Excuse, excuse me one minute, one question for Rhonda, how many people again on Plan C?
Let me see if I can find those numbers.
I think I'm looking at it.
She told us 915 altogether.
All together.
Altogether, it's 915 on that one, 400.
414.
Almost half, almost half of what is here, yes. Okay.
414 on C, 214 on C.
And Rob, and Roberts Rule.
Just so we can...
Just for clarification, if this thing dies for lack of a motion, I mean, we, we, it ends. Oh, okay.
That's what I was trying to make sure.
Yes, I'm trying to make sure we, we understand that.
Rhonda, could you repeat the numbers for the...
If these numbers are the ones I'm using, because this is just some jotted-down notes, I get my numbers from Tammy, I'm showing 414 on C.
414 employees.
Yeah, and...
And how many together on C and E, excuse me, C, D, and E?
Minus that from your 15.
Yeah, a total of 915, 15, I think.
Uh-huh. I can make a...
And you just subtract, you're looking at 401. If they're not, if they're 915 covered, period, and you take your 14, 414 from, it's 501, I mean, yeah, 501, four from 91, 501. Right, right, but it's teetering there.
I look at this, I look at this, and then, you know, the superintendent, he obviously wants to do what we all want to do, we want to be all things to all people and help everybody, but somebody's gonna need to do something. And, I mean, either, either go with what we've looked at or, or do what Ms. Pickens, the question she asked, and roll, roll back Plan C, but I don't know, y'all, if you want to surrender the gavel, you could make a motion.
Well, I, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion that we accept what we discussed to begin with, 150 flat subsidy for all plans, knowing that we are going to do some kind of formal announcement, starting with our employees for the following year, that we are going to what the insurance committee has been talking about, so we can try to get more people on D and E. Does that make sense? It doesn't, does it?
So you're looking, just for clarification, item two under action C, board insurance subsidy contribution, you are looking at raising that to $150 flat rate across the board for all employees? Is that clarification? I see, I see the attorney looking, we want to get this right.
And just for Rhonda's purposes, that would be for participants, not all employees, is that correct?
Right.
For participants, thank you, thank you for clarification.
So your motion would be for $150 per participant?
Yes.
Is that correct?
For all plans.
Okay, would you just restate that in the motion so the record is clear?
I make a motion that the board give a $150 flat subsidy for each employee that participa- no?
Each participant, yeah, each participant.
Each participant in our, in the insurance. Because nobody else is making a motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been motion by Mrs. Jane Crawford that the board will give a $150 flat rate subsidy for all employees insured with the school board, with the district. Each participant in the district, and it was second by Mrs. Holly Pickens, and we, any discussion?
My only que, my only discussion would be, I would be more inclined to roll back Plan C, to the $100 level that was mentioned, and, but I, I, well, it, we'll see how this motion goes, and then maybe we will, but let's, let's see what happens, and that would be my only discussion. I would, I would have to try to meet, with all the work the insurance committee's done, I'd have to try to find some way to make some ground there.
I'll have to second that as well, you have to take the recommendation from the insurance committee, and it's right from the very proposal, they, $75 was the first amount, I think $100 would be reasonable, and it'd be in line of what we want to accomplish down the road, and it wouldn't be such a hardship for the D and E carriers or the participants.
Well, I wish y'all had made those motions.
You've got a motion and a second.
I withdraw my motion.
You withdraw your motion?
I rescind my motion. Okay, and you rescind your second, okay.
But you want to make the motion, or you want me to make a motion?
Go ahead, David.
I make a motion that we tweak the plan to, to be a $100 cross contribution to Plan C, employees who take Plan C, and for those with D and E, it be a $150 across-the-board contribution for them. Mr. Attorney, does that sound palatable?
Correct to you, Rhonda, too?
Okay.
I'll second it.
All right, it's been motion by Mr. David Buckles that Plan C participants will receive $100 flat rate, and those participating in Plans D and E will receive $150 flat rate in, in line with what was recommended by our insurance committee. All right, any discussion?
For, Rhonda, could you give us an idea of how much money that saves or puts in the, you, you can't answer that.
If, I can say if those 414 people...
Stayed.
Stay on C, yes.
That's a savings of... That's a savings of, because we just reduced from the spreadsheets, $50 a month, which would be 500, $207,000. To, that's, that's how much the group insurance would, you know, not go down.
Who seconded that motion?
Me.
Mr. McInnes.
Anything else, Holly?
You guys are free to move on.
And what was it again? Just?
$207,000, that's, that's, Plan C people will not be getting...
The 150, but 100. So, that, 50 times the 414.
500 times 414.
Okay, okay.
7,000.
Okay.
So, that, do you know off the top of your head how much that increase would be for C? The increase in the premium with the...
We have that.
Oh, yeah, we got that.
It's here, $100.
It's a $100 increase a month.
Yeah.
$91.
So, it would actually be that C's cost employee only is going up $91.04.
Okay. All right. There goes my heat now.
And so, the C people, a lot of them are retirees or we don't?
It does look like it's everybody's...
It's the majority, 70% retirees out of our 100.
The ones that can at least afford the...
But they, we haven't talked about the retirees yet. I think that's the next motion. They do not, the retirees do not get this extra subsidy. They get, right now, they get...
The flat subsidy that...
Flat subsidy of 100 that you haven't discussed yet. That's the next one.
Yes, because we're not on that one.
Yeah, we have, yeah, that's next.
They don't get that 100 plus this subsidy, too. They don't get that 100 plus the 75 that employees are currently getting.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
All right. And if, okay, I see a look.
So, actually, I need to change, I did the 14, so I need to change on that.
I thought that they got all of them, they don't?
No.
Because I, I included the retirees in this number, so I just want us to be, be on record that we are trying to get the number as close as possible. So, it's now going to be a savings to the group insurance fund for our employees of 168,500, the number of employees, not retirees, because I did the whole number of 414 that had retirees in it.
Okay, all righty.
You guys, you guys can vote it up or down and we can do this again, whatever you want to do.
Okay.
Okay, my, my one thing, the amount of money that we're dealing with, $178,000 is, $68,000 is just really...
Not money.
Not a lot of money in the scheme of things. And if it helps, I, I don't...
I agree.
That's just not that much of a savings to us.
To lower it to the, to the 100 for C?
Right.
Right. I agree.
Okay, so we are now officially back where we started, so, but the motion was made by Mr. Bud McInnes, and it was second by Mrs. Buckles.
It'll have to be voted on and, unless somebody withdraws a motion. Did I make the motion, Bud, or did you?
Yes, sir, you did.
Well, let's, let's, let's let them vote this up or down and then we'll see what happens.
Okay. Before we go there, before we go there, for, for me, for clarification, we're saying the discussion was, and the motion, the motion was C, 100, D and E, 150, as opposed to the 150 across the board for every employee. Mrs. Pickens' concern is, and well taken, is that the amount that we're saving by keeping the extra 50 from the Plan C people is not that greater savings. Am I, am I...
That's what I think.
That's what you think. Okay, all righty. Okay.
So, for my clarification, if we went to a vote, we, we still have to make a decision, right?
If we go to a vote, it, it carries, if, if it doesn't carry 3-2, then it's voted down and somebody else has to make another motion to maybe do what, what the original motion was. Okay?
Are we ready to call for a vote?
All righty. Any more discussion? All right, the motion is on the floor from Mr. David Buckles, which, what I've stated, but I restated, Plan C, $100, Plan D and E, $150. And it was second by Mr. Bud McInnes. All right? If there are no more discussion, we are now ready to vote. All in favor? Let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Opposers?
Aye.
Aye. It's a two, three?
That two in favor of the motion and three opposed?
Two in favor, three opposed.
So, it's going, we're going to have another motion.
Yeah. Okay, let's, let's, let's go again and look at this. And again, it is not easy. We are trying to do what we feel is in the best interest of each employee, to not give it in one hand, the, the raise and take it away with the other. And so, we're back to where we started, but we're concerned and we want to get it as close to right as possible.
And also want to say, I understand what the insurance committee is doing. And I, and as much as I hate it, I understand that we have to. But I just would rather stick to what we came up with and then have some kind of formal information given to our employees that that's what we're doing next year.
Mr. Motul did mention educating the employees. He, he did say that.
Yeah, I know, I know he did. I know. Well, I'm going to try this one more time. I would like to make a motion that we subsidize our employees $150 for each participant in our insurance plans.
I second.
Okay, it's been motioned by Mrs. Jane Crawford that we accept for item B, Board Insurance Subsidy Contribution, 170, $150 across the board for Plans C, D, and E, and it was second by Mrs. Holly Pickens. All in favor? Oh, any discussion?
Should we word that to say employees?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, and we should have. Participant, employees, employee, participant. Participating employees. Okay. Mrs. Carmody, you have that? Participating employees. Okay, all right, now, all in favor? Let it be known by aye. Oh, we've had, I asked for discussion.
She's already asked.
I asked for discussion, yes. All in favor? Let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Opposers?
Aye.
We have three, four, I mean, and two opposed. You have to know who they are.
Mr. McInnes. McInnes and Mr. Buckles.
Mr. Buckles, yes. Okay. Motion carries three, two. Okay, our next item of discussion, elimination of the monthly premium, premium supplement for each retiree.
By the way, I'm on Plan C, so I just...
I'm, I'm just not prepared to do that.
I, I think we talk about retaining employees and, and hiring employees, and if this is a benefit that draws people to our county, then, you know, I say we keep it.
Okay.
That's how I feel.
And my opinion is...
For as long as we can.
Ms., Ms., Ms. Odom had a, has a, a solution, it's not a rapid solution, but she's working on it with new, new hires and things over, over time, so...
And my, my opinion is of such, for whatever it's worth, we, we rewarded those 20-plus employees, and I say, when a person has given to, to this district, then I'm all for not eliminating the monthly premium supplement to each of the employees. Now, that's my two cents worth. Any other discussion before we entertain a motion?
Madam, go ahead, Bud.
Just for clarification, how much is it again? So, we have...
It is $100 a month, so a total yearly of $1,000.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the, to continue the monthly premium supplement to each retiree.
I'll second that.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Buckles that we continue the monthly premium supplement of $100 for each retiree, and it was second by Mrs. Jane Crawford. Any discussion? All right? All in favor? Let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Opposers? Hearing none. Motion carries five, zero. Okay, the final item on our agenda is the Wellness Coordinator, $500 supplement.
Now, Rhonda, where do...
I need some discussion on this. I mean, just tell me what this is.
Where did you say the money comes from to pay them?
That's out of the wellness project that we have.
Okay.
Started many years ago when we had Blue Cross of New Shield as activity, and they contributed $150,000 a year towards wellness that came to the district, and we put it into the special project only to use, we got health fairs with it, did all the things. And at the current time, we still continue to use that. The United Healthcare also did wellness, but it went into the...
The cards and...
All employees could earn up to $200 that went into their pocket in the form of gift cards. So, we continued over the years to continue using that leftover money, and there's still like $130,000 in there.
And so, how much does it cost per year to, to give the $500 supplement?
I'm going to go with it, there's probably 24 employees, because there's 18 schools and then the department.
Got it, I remember this. I remember this.
Maybe a little all, times $500, that's $12,000.
So, we can fund that?
Yes.
We can continue to fund it. You said you had a list of things they do.
Yeah, you made me remember. I, I recall it being at the last school I was at and when I was here at the district office, that wellness coordinator would come up with ideas.
I can read it to you, but it's a very long list of their duties and everything that Nikki Hawthorne provided to me, because the School Food Service Department coordinates the...
And who picks that person at each site?
Each site has an election.
Okay.
And they get their representative.
I don't know if people volunteer or anything like that, I'm not sure exactly how it's chosen, but each site is...
So, Nikki kind of follows up on what they do?
It specifies in the letter what they have to do.
And I can forward this letter to everybody if you would like, so you can forward to see what they do.
Okay, and so, the insurance committee is recommending that we continue to pay that supplement? Okay. I'll make a motion that we award the wellness coordinator at each site a $500 supplement.
I second.
All right, it's been motioned by Mrs. Jane Crawford that we award each wellness coordinator at the various sites a $500 supplement, and it was second by Mrs. Holly Pickens. Discussion? All right? Hearing none. All in favor? Let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Opposers? Hearing none. Motion carries five, zero.
Madam Chair, I talked to our board attorney, and I've got the email from your board attorney, your attorney for the RFP.
All right, and we're going to allow...
And I'm going to ask you to read it out loud.
Me?
Yes, for, just for the record.
Okay.
If you would, just...
And there aren't any, any words on here that I would need someone to decipher.
I'll help, I'll help you.
No insurance terminology.
I'll help you.
A bunch of numbers there.
Okay.
I'll read it if you want me to.
External Notice of Protest, RFP 540062015. And then, in brackets, it has RKC-Active.FID3283693. Mr. Superintendent, in reference to your question regarding the notice of protest received for RFP 54006215, Section 120.1573, C, Florida statute requires receipt of a formal written protest, not simply a notice of protest, to stay the contract award process. Thus far, the district has only received a notice of protest. Therefore, the award process may continue, and it so ends.
And it did.
After the meeting, did you sign that document and give it to Miss Carmody? You don't have to talk about it, just sign it later.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
If there is nothing else to come before the board during this special board meeting, it is officially adjourned.